All right, it's six thirty. This is a regular meeting of the Girdon School District Board of Directors. We'll now call the meeting to order. Madam Secretary, can you establish that we have a call? All right, we, we have a call. Uh, Cass can give us some prayer.
You bow your head to me. Definitely, Father. Well, we just thank you for today. Lord, just thank you for letting us get here safely. God, we just pray special prayer protection over this bus coming back with our basketball players on it right now as the roads are bad. God, we just thank you for the leaders that you have put in position at our school and God, we just thank you for their wisdom as they guided us through these last few days of inclement weather. And God, we just ask for a special blessing over our students and, and God, just help us make wise decisions as we're here tonight. Thank you. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand with me for the pledge. I pledge the way of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, for which it stands, one nation under God, and with a peaceful, harmonious, prosperous, thorough
There's some folks we want to recognize.
Yeah, it's not getting started tonight with Riley nominated me to go first this time. I wish my kids were here, but my kids found out about this like the Friday before snowpocalypse and then with the flood. My kids are not here tonight, but I will recognize them, but I am going to recognize my two adults that did show up. Um, because these are two people who they don't have to do what they do and they do it so well. So any student who has been in Ms. Jackie's class will tell you she is their absolute favorite person on the face of the earth. It doesn't matter. Everything is about Ms. Jackie. In fact, seniors often try to get Ms. Jackie to speak at graduation and she continues to resist and refuse because she says, no, I'm not going to do it. But they love and adore her. So, and our faculty and staff, they all know that. So for January Staff of Month, it's Ms. Jackie McPhee. And to tell you how much the other one means to us, you know, Coach K doesn't even really work on our campus. She works with our kids in the gym, but Coach K, you don't know this, is at school before I get there in the morning. And works with our 21st century kids in the library until seven thirty when she has to go to her real job. And then she comes back as soon as school is out to work with our kids again. So she gives her time before and after school to our high school kids and our, again, our teachers and our staff recognize that. And that's why Coach K is starting high school from true.
I hope this picture is better than the one Miss Wolf.
My picture turned out very well. I'm sorry. Um, but our students of the month that I do just want to mention, um, we had quite a few. We had five this month. We had two juniors, Croatia Moody, um, who is on the bus on her way back from Florida, not getting to play in the game tonight. And Chris, all of us who, Miss herself can tell you what a great kid he is. Uh, ninth graders, Taylor Cook and Daniel Cruz. Again, teachers couldn't say enough just about how good these kids are. And Robbie, your son was our senior student of the month and I promise I did tell him to be here tonight, but like I said, I told the kids all before everything happened, so they're not here. But they're always appreciative when I give them these certificates and it is an honor for them that you honor and recognize them.
So I will see my students every minute. And so we have one from each grade and it's our memory. Try to pick one on each campus to share with you because there's so many. And so one of our students of the month is in kindergarten and this was Ruben Franco Alvera. And Ruben was nominated for his father, he always showed kindness to others. And he was just always positive, always followed the rules, always did his best. So I'm so excited they got to come tonight. And I have to say Ivana, who is mom, was one of my first students when I started teaching. Honored that we get to bring Ruben tonight and celebrate him. So come on up, Ruben.
You want to give your camera to somebody else? Y'all on the pitch, everyone on the squad.
And our other student of the month we were going to recognize tonight is a second grader, Blakely Nugent. And they're not able to make it tonight because there's a lot of ways to play. And so, um, they're not able, once they got in the house, it's very hard for them to get out because they're totally, so. But we were going to celebrate Miss Blakely tonight as well. And her dad did comment that he was very appreciative that y'all took the time to just recognize their students. He was very proud. So our staff of the month are not able to be here for different reasons, weather, losses in the family. But they are very appreciative and each one of them sent me a message and wanted you to know they appreciate this opportunity, but with the weather, family issues right now, they weren't able to come. But, and then you get the papers out. Ms. Jesser was recognized as our, as our elementary teacher. She was nominated because she worked so hard to ensure all of her science students have a solid foundation for concepts. She works quietly, you know, you don't hear a lot from her, but she's always just in her room being productive and making sure that business is taken care of. Creates an organized environment. She always has experimental projects going on in labs, hat expectations for her scores for her students. And she made a lot of headway in science because I don't know if everyone knows that our sixth graders scored above the state on their science checklist. So that was really exciting. And then our Sky from the elementary school was Yesenia Afara. She is an instructional parent and she works a lot with the second graders this year, but she jumps in everywhere I ask her to. She translates and even if it's like just a phone call home to parents, she'll make it for me and I'll just give her the message. She's a second grade rock star. She'll put on any hat given to her to wear. She's always forthcoming with help, never selfish with her time and effort. She has really helped navigating life amongst the littles. She just jumps in and adapts. And so having the littles on the middle school campus was a little bit of an adjustment. So she helps a lot with everybody just adjusting to that. But, um, she's a interpreter. She's an interventionist for our dyslexia program. I mean, it never stops. She fills in in the office when we need her to and right now she's pulling a lot of weight in second grade just to help us out. And so we really appreciate this, you know? I know we have a lot, I have a lot of staff. So Ms. Taylor Prime, she's not from Girdon, but we're lucky because we're glad we have her. We stole her from Arkadia. She's a special ed parent that works at the primary school and she has a job that can be, you know, it, it can be trying, you know, especially it can be trying sometimes, but she has never faltered with her love and positive attitude there she is. She loves her students so much. And even if a student may not be one of the ones she works with, she just jumps in and helps and you don't have to tell her. She just takes the initiative to pick up wherever we need her to pick up. So as a principal, I really appreciate that because I know she's always willing to jump in. And so our teacher of the month from the primary was actually Mrs. Renfro, who moves all over the place. She's on both campuses and, um, she's very busy, but she was nominated for always being kind, helped her to students and staff. And I can testify to that because she's always been very encouraging to me and positive to everyone. She finds the bright light and everything that happens at school. So those might happen.
Okay. So, you know, last week we were really busy and we, we did have a lot of conversations, a lot of, a lot of extra effort went out. So there's two guys that I want to nominate, I'm gonna say two and a half, that I want to, I want to tell you about. Anytime I asked them what, what the roads look like, how slick were they driving on them, there's two gentlemen, I'd let John be up here. Uh, Mr. Dustin Self, and I did lie to you earlier today, so I apologize. The, the board doesn't want you here for any reason. I wanted you here. And Kendall Freeman and Jim, we kind of like you here too. These guys were up this morning even at four o'clock, yes, uh, Monday morning. They were driving the road to make sure we're all good. There's a third one, I know, I've already, I've already told him no about this. There's a third one who's a, who is a road roller or a probie. And I'm not, we would have put him on the road driving, but he refused to get out of his pajamas. But I just want to thank these guys for always making sure that our kids are safe and communicating and talking about what we did. So.
Thank you, Father.
If we'd had time, we'd have put a vote on there.
There, we do need to go into executive session. I do need to talk with you a little bit for just a few moments. Uh, those of you that are visiting with us, uh, you're welcome.
We dispense with this exercise session. We'll now call this meeting back to order.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the personnel package as presented.
Yeah, we got a motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dispend, same side, that motion passed. For the minutes. We're going to consider the minutes from the last board meeting. Got a motion to accept the minutes as stand.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side, that makes a pass. Rhonda, financial report. Okay. Next item of business is to consider the approval of financial report. Any questions will be directed to Rhonda.
Rhonda, you want to say something?
You can tell we, um, we started last December. We're at one point nine hundred million and we did a, we did a month of December and nearly two of them, I mean, not quite. Um, one of the biggest things in the finance world right now is audit. She called us probably about December the sixth and she came today and picked up invoices, packed all the records that she will play back and work on. And probably, I have no questions. So we're probably, our role will probably be tied up with, and it has been tied up with audit and full in paper work and full in checks and full in, um, all type of documentation for her. So you may have, you may have gotten a contact from her and if not, you may still get that. So just be aware of, her name is Amy.
Don't look at me. I don't remember.
Don't leave the light. Um, so anyway, um, if she hasn't contacted you, she may. So whatever she asks, honest and best you can. And if you have any questions, you can always call her. I mean, you know, uh, that's pretty much what's going on in the finance world. You're in, stay in this, we're good.
I can actually approve the financial board reports.
We got a motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side, that motion passed. Next item of business is the business legal finance consent agenda.
Where I get that book. So we're, first item on it will be the twenty, the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five academic calendar. Uh, we did go through our PPC. We discussed, I would, I'd like to say ad nauseam, but we did discuss it a lot. Uh, so there are a couple of things on here that would, would point out that uh, some of the benefits of a four day calendar, uh, as far as retention and, and bus driver recruitment, we're hoping that would, it would help that. Uh, some of our travel that might come up. Uh, we have already discussed some of our other things that we're concerned about, like our backpack program, making sure that those are taken care of. Did list a couple of schools, a few schools that we know are doing the four day academic calendar. There's probably, would we count forty-five?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
That we're doing four day. That was up in twenty-nine.
Okay. So, and there's more that are proposing to do that again this year. Some are proposing to even do a year round calendar, uh, which is not a very popular calendar. Uh, but that's another option that we did discuss, uh, in, in PPC and discussing the drafts of these four and five, uh, day calendars. So when you look at the statit, at the results of the calendars, when we put it before the staff, uh, those in favor of it from our community members, we had a seventy-four that, that would be in favor of a four day calendar, twenty percent who were not in favor and six percent who had no preference. Our staff members, eighty-three percent, uh, with ninety-two responses was a four day calendar is what they would prefer and five day, rather than a five day calendar for next year. The other thing that you'll see on here in the last page of it is we have the start date for schools is always on the, the nineteenth, the Monday of when the nineteenth of August falls. But charter schools, we've learned, can start on the fourteenth. So all the public schools have been asked to send in a request for waiver to start on the fourteenth, which would back it up to the middle of the previous week, rather than having to go all the way until after, uh, Memorial Day to fit into the calendars. Because it just, the way it falls, it just swings it later in the year. So what we're, what we're putting in, if the, if the state will approve it, you can see this is the wa, a waiver for a regional early start. So it's called regional because it's done by each of the ESCs. They did not want us all doing it individually. They said, get all the regional centers to do this. Again, I don't know how this started, but I did have conversation with Darren Beckwith back in November. That I thought it was unfair that by law we have to start on the nineteenth, which pushes everything there. There's nothing we could do. So I don't know if they all, he started hearing a bunch of this clamoring going on, but if you can start a calendar on a Wednesday, it is academically beneficial for students because you can get all of your routines and everything established for those three days or two days and whatever it might be. And then you really hit school going the following week. A lot of times it's difficult to transition from the things that you're supposed to be starting with and move on. So there's some benefits to that. The other thing is if we can move this up to where we're out of school before Memorial Day, your attendance rates after that go down terribly after Memorial Day. So we try to not go into that as well. So what I would want is for us to approve this as well, so we can send in. I don't know if they're going to approve it. So these calendars are based on not having this approved by the state. If they approve this, we come back with moving the date up and navigating through where, how we would move this. So just want you to be aware of that too. So questions or comments or thoughts or?
I think there's overwhelming support for a four day week. I don't have any problem with it. What do y'all think?
We had discussions. I mean, we was hitting, you know, our kids need to be in class. They need in-class instruction. I see how it benefits the teachers, but, but you are the sure. But I just tried to, you know, how it benefits the district. I mean, I, I look at this and I call someone basically, did he get no survey? And we wouldn't support this. But I'm, I'm looking at the data and I'm seeing the data, cause my concern is I'm seeing these other schools, but these other schools don't have our grades. And I'm looking at every other Friday, our students can get instructions. What about those Fridays that's not on the calendar? Where they need some help? I'm putting out there, what about those days, those weeks? Cause you look, one month, we got one day of Friday instruction. You look at the calendar, every other week. See, I, I understand how the teachers would benefit for this. But what about the students in the district that's already behind? That's already to be brought up. And I've heard from the teachers and everybody else talking, well, these kids need to be what? Have in, in-class instruction, but now you want to go back and take a day from them. So my question is, what is best for the district?
Well, some of the things that you'll see is, is I know that we're going to lose it. A teacher or two, we've already lost some last year that went to districts with four day calendars. That's, the recruitment piece is going to be an issue. Um, I'm hoping that we can even get our transportation, getting bus drivers is with, so if we can get them for four days, knowing that they only drive in four days, that would help us there. Instructionally, those yellow days that you see on those Fridays are specifically designed for that purpose of targeting the ones that need scaffold instruction. So that is, that's what those are designed for. And there's some school districts that don't have that built in to where the, that, that's an option of what they're trying to do. Uh, the staff on the other part of that is, like, there's going to be an extended date because we have to get into a certain number of minutes in. Would be more the where we can actually target inside of those to build more scaffold instruction and, and interventions that we could do on, on a daily basis to help with that piece. The days that were, that no one's here, it'd be like, just like a Saturday, there's no one here to do that part.
Look at this, okay. How does this save us money then?
All right. So.
Cause, cause we could have reduced these teacher contracts days.
But it's not going to reduce their salaries.
But you know, that's why I see, I see how it benefits the teachers tremendously.
Well.
I see, I honestly, I hundred percent didn't vote for it. But, but I'm looking at the district. I mean.
But it's, it's not just teachers too that voted. So it's, it's all the staff members that voted. So this was, this was open for everyone. So it, it's not just benefiting that piece. What it, what it is going to benefit is the recruitment piece of quality teachers and retaining the ones that we have. Uh, I know, I know we're going to lose two because they're going to go, they're going to district where there's going to be four. One I know is going to do it because I think it's his drive and I get that part of it as well. So those are the, I mean, I, I think it's a great benefit financially for our transportation issues. I talked with Dustin, it's about eighteen thousand dollars a year that we'd save in, in fuel and wear on the buses. Uh, on not having that one extra day a week that we're doing it. For our teachers, it is beneficial for them when we're paying the salaries and they're not having to drive. We have one driving from Benton. So that back and forth drive, that's one day that they don't have to drive. So that's, that's almost like a, a rage in itself for them.
I bet these other schools, I mean, these other schools, their test scores ain't gone down.
They haven't gone down.
That's what, I mean, I've talked to some of them. They say their test scores ain't gone down. Matter of fact, they may have gone up a little bit.
Some, well, here's.
Not all of them, a few of them.
Well, it, and the, and the, when you look at research, it doesn't show you that there was any significant improvement or decline in the academic success.
We need to.
But it hadn't shown either way by going from a five to a four. But it did show that there was lower discipline and there was higher attendance by students and staff.
I've heard the attendance over like from every district, that their attendance is much better, which makes sense.
Of the wonder, uh, you know, if you give these teachers an extended break, a longer weekend, maybe to refresh and come back stronger the next week. I mean, that's.
But what about the parents that work five days a week?
That's definitely, I mean, that's a question I had.
Leaving Carly at home by herself.
True.
I mean.
I mean, that's.
But that's those.
That is the question. I think we have a lot of shift work people that's going to have to work.
Everybody will start knowing these kids are at home by themselves.
Yeah, I understand that for sure.
I'm not voting on this tonight. I can tell you that.
You said, um, uh, it was mentioned that there, there would be fewer instructional days, but as far as the hours, the hours would be the same, correct? And so what are the operating hours on a four day week?
It would, on a four day week, now this is, this is a proposed typical time where you would, it would be seven forty-five to four ten. Would get in the minutes that you would need roughly. I'm, I'm talking roughly. And right now it is seven fifty to three ten, I believe. So it's about, about an hour, maybe just a little over.
What's our longest bus route? I'm, I'm, Dustin, maybe, is Oklahoma the longest or?
Oklahoma is the longest, but the long rolls are about, uh, she normally leaves, been on one student that lives kind of off the route. If that student's riding, she's usually gone by five fifty. And she's getting to the school about seven thirty-five-ish.
Okay. What time would the kid have to get on the bus?
Two fifty-five and she's getting back to the yard around four thirty.
What time would the first kid have to get on the bus?
That I don't know right now because of the, the timing that we, that I know of that we haven't decided on.
But if, if the timing that I suggested, it would be, it'd be the same time.
Was it, was it explained to me that I really, we were getting our kids to school currently?
About the same time.
Just suffice for this four day deal?
Right. It, it's, it'd be more of an extended time in the afternoon.
It would be the extended time. And I think if, if I read this, if I read into this, right, we're looking at a forty-five minute extension of our day.
Forty-five minutes to an hour. I'd have to calculate, see how it would work because there's some early release days that we'd have to make sure we calculated the minutes in there as well.
Let me ask one question. What time do these kids eat lunch? Yeah. What time do they eat lunch? I'm asking you. Y'all know.
My kids start eating lunch at ten forty. They go to different chips.
So they eat lunch at ten forty and they get out of school at fourteen.
We do have an afternoon snack. I can hear your provides.
But what about the rest of the students?
High school students, uh, nine through twelve eat at eleven twenty and then seventh and eighth grade eat at twelve ten.
So would that have to be adjusted or would there have to be some adjustment?
Lunchtimes are always going to have to be adjusted if we do anything to change the schedule because I had to adjust them this year due to the fact of having seventh and eighth grade on our campus and we wanted to make sure there were two lunches, one specifically for seventh and eighth grade and one for the nine through twelve. So the lunchtimes are always going to have to be adjusted depending on what the master schedule looks like.
See, I'm looking at this because I'm looking, okay, these kids could be hungry.
Yeah, especially the kid that gets on the bus last on Oklahoma.
And I'm just looking at this. But I mean, this four day schedule, it doesn't work great for me personally, because I'm out doing the day. Well, what about them parents? Cause I know we go to a four day school day. That means, uh, century twenty-first go to a what?
That with all the yellow days, twenty-first century would be, that's part of what's going to be working with the twenty-first century would be on those yellow days.
But see, those are the days, what about those teachers that we need? You better pull them in.
That's where twenty-first century is actually going to be pulling them in. Yes.
Cause I'm like, if this student needs some help here and we're not strong here, they need some help. Cause I, I'm talking to parents. They say they send homework home. I can't help my kid. And they say, I can't help my kid. So, so what is happening? See, cause I'm trying to, I'm looking at these grades right now and you telling me there is no significant change. So what makes the year be there next year? That we really can't benefit from the learns app?
No, that's not what that means. There's not a correlation to that though.
These grades in our school building, they never going to go away in my mind. I want them to go up.
You gotta have good teachers for that to happen.
What do we got now?
You're going to be able to keep them.
But you don't, what we, from that company, what do we got now?
It was biz Mark. I had to do the training. I did the Zoom and they interviewed superintendent up there. I think it's biz Mark. They got a woman, female supervisor.
Yeah, Susan Kesar.
She said that's the only way she can keep teachers is there right there.
I tried to talk to a math teacher at Kemba Garden last year and blah, and they were like, they kind of laughed. They were like, I'll just drive and work four days. So can I ask you about our master schedule for the high school? Do you think we've, um, like, I know you put a ton of time into this. I'm trying to get the kids like that their core curriculum is in the morning and the afternoon. Is that decently worked out or?
Um, that has been a struggle for us simply because at the high school, especially with our seventh and eighth grade, we're working with two seventh and eighth grade teachers right now. And the only reason that has worked is because of the size of that eighth grade class. If that eighth grade class was any bigger, there's no way we could have made it, made it work.
And they're like thirty kids, thirty-two kids or something, right? Like they're a very small class.
Yeah, they're down to twenty-four on our campus. Yeah. So, but like next year, we won't be able to do that. We'll have to shuffle the master schedule again. Every year you're going to have to change the master schedule because your numbers dictate what you need where. And the teachers that you have are going to dictate how many you can offer and where you can offer it.
How you can put this, but you think like ninety percent of kids are getting like their core curriculum in the morning though, like?
It's more of the high school kids that are getting theirs in the morning.
Okay, okay. What about?
You still have some that are going to get it in the afternoon because we have some kids that are not involved in those afternoon activities and that's where their four classes have to be. But this year we have far fewer core classes at the high school level at the end of the day. We've got more teachers, I think, on eighth period prep this year than we've ever had.
I just feel like the majority of us will all agree, like as adults or as kids, like we're more productive in the morning. I mean, that's where we're going to get things done. But do you think that with the flip of like, I know we've, you know, we've, we've downsized on teachers by attrition. But do you think that we have messed up the master schedule for the primary school, that some of the primary school kids are like having, like they're not having core time?
It's a big challenge because we share a lot of staff and so if she's using them in the afternoon, the stuff that I need, I have to use them in the morning to and I, I have to schedule that activity in the morning. So that's been difficult. If she's using them in the afternoon, the staff that I need, I have to use them in the morning to, and I, I have to schedule that activity in the morning, so that's been difficult, but.
Like with the activity teachers, is that like where we're really struggling?
All in the morning.
Okay.
And then the kindergarten there starts at twelve thirty, but the rest of them, I mean, we start at eight thirty-five, nine fifteen, ten fifteen to squeeze them all in, so.
You say that's a struggle, is that because we're, we're, we're multiple pensions?
I think it's a struggle because of the staff that we share, we managed it, but I've had to schedule my activity periods. I had to balance it with her, this is the first year I've done a master schedule, but it was very difficult, because I had to make sure she had the people she needed when she needed them. And I had the people I needed when I needed them.
And on the flip side of that, I've needed people that I can't access, but that's, that's when she has them.
So, so, so my concern with the four day schedule, uh, is like we're definitely packing things in in four days, um, and then, you know, obviously, um. And I want that core instructional time, and I feel like that's how we're gonna get grades up, is core instructional time being in the morning, um, so. And kids showing up to class, I feel like that's the other piece of it too, um, so what do we need to do if we went to a four day schedule to make sure that. You have teachers available to teach and we're not pulling out for art or recess or, I'm not saying recess. Art or P E or something, because we're utilizing those high school teachers to teach that, I think that's where we're messing up at Robbie is like. A- and you correct me if I'm wrong, like a high school coach is coming to teach P E and so.
Kindergarten P E is split between two coaches, so that they can have time to get back to cover their other classes for her.
But they're coming like in the morning at the primary school, because they've gotta be back to the high school in the afternoon, so I think we've, we fixed some of high school's issue, but we made an issue at primary. Inadvertently.
So, i- i- would it be correct to say we don't have enough staff?
I think so.
Yeah, and we know why we don't have enough staff. Um, I, I'm for a Thursday, a, a four day a week schedule, however, I, I do have some questions. Um, well, I got a statement first, obviously, uh, I work a four day week, I'm for four days, okay? Uh, but, uh, it, and it is a change, when you, if you go to, uh, seven forty-five to four ten, I'm sure I'm not telling anybody anything that's gonna be a big change. And I've talked to other people who are in a four day a week, or four, four week, a four day week schedule at other schools. And they say it's a, it's a pretty big change, that first month or so of making that change, that's, that's pretty tough for the students and for the teachers, obviously. Uh, but I, I do have a couple of questions, uh, the schedule that we have in front of us is a Monday through Thursday schedule. My first question is, why was a Monday through Thursday schedule chosen as opposed to a Tuesday through Friday schedule? If anybody knows.
There wasn't, there, there wasn't, it wasn't a decision really made on a preference between one or the other. Uh, it was, it was laid out as a Monday through, we did talk about what, what day of the week we would use, there are people who you have Mondays off, people who have Fridays. Where they're off, one school district I know of has a Wednesday off in their four day week. Uh, the Wednesday off was ruled out immediately, there was some discussion between a Monday and Friday, there's pros and cons for both. Um, and so as we built it, we just built it with a Friday as that day.
The reason I asked that, the reason I asked that question is because when, when, when these options and schedules first came about, at least my understanding of them when I first heard them. Back a couple of years ago, whenever this kind of stuff started happening, was that most schools who play football would be generally speaking, a Tuesday through Friday. Schools who don't play, which I think is probably, if you look at the list that we were given, Levens, Wash- Washita, Caddo Hills, Kirby, who don't play football. I'm assuming they're going to be Tuesday through, excuse me, Monday through Thursday, I understand center point is a Monday through Thursday. Bismarck is a Tuesday through Friday.
I've had negative from some of the Bismarck staff and teachers and parents say, there's a lot of like dental offices closed on Monday. And like beauticians, like there's certain professions that aren't open on Monday, and I don't, I mean, I don't know at what point they didn't, like, they realized that, that sometimes like, like. It made them take off steel throughout the week to get like dental appointments done, so that was an oddity.
I don't know a dentist that works on Friday, so, I didn't know they worked, I'm sure there's some.
Also no more for three days.
Cause I heard the, I heard exactly the opposite, I've heard, we try to schedule all our appointments on Monday for students, for teachers, etc. Um. I, I'm just curious as to why Monday through Thursday was, and the reason I asked that question is because we, we have football here. And so I, I'm wondering, how, how much of a day off is a football Friday gonna feel like? If, if you've got teachers ac- actually having to work the gate, or obviously, I'm assuming administration's gonna be at the game. Band's gonna be at the game, football player's gonna be at the game, uh, football coach is gonna be at the game, so I'm just curious as to how much of a day off that truly. That truly is. Um, at least during, uh, football season, I guess, I guess basketball may have that same issue on a Friday as well. Um, and so I, I, I have a little bit of concern for that, because these other schools. That, you know, they have a different schedule, they, they, they do, they do a Tuesday third Friday, it's. Anyway, um. Uh, the other question that I'm gonna ask about that, a couple of months ago, we, we had a discussion in here about pep rallies. And my comment at the time was, I don't really think we should be discussing pep rallies, however, in light of a calendar like this, if you don't have school on Friday. Cause my comment was, I, I trust the administration to be able to make a decision on to give opportunity for the school, the students to exhibit, uh, school spirit. If you don't have school on a Friday, is that, should I assume that that's gonna completely wipe out the option of having a pep rally on a Friday? Uh, I'm assuming it would be not on a Friday, and then that, that, that rolls over into you have a pep rally on a Thursday if you decide to have one. But then you're gonna have junior high games on Thursday, so, while I was standing behind my statement that I made a couple of months ago in here, that I don't know that that's something we should really be discussing. I, I do trust the administration to do that, but is, does that completely wipe that off as an option with this type of schedule?
Well, I don't think you would have the participation of students, if you were to say come up tomorrow Friday, let's have a pep rally on that day. On a Thursday, you would have, you could have that pep rally, uh, and, and many states, I'll, and I, I hate to go back and say Texas, but. We, we all shared a stadium, there might be six football teams in this one stadium, and so we, the ways, and, so you may have a pep rally on Friday, but your game's not until Saturday anyway, so. That, it wasn't always the same day as the ball game, so you still have the pep rally, you can still have those pieces. Uh, and. I don't, so the answer to that Robbie, I don't know that the participation piece, I totally understand the idea of whether or not with a football game. Uh, when you are off that day, then you have to come up here, and, and getting people to come up and then work the gates, and so getting people to help out would be more of an issue. Since they're already here, might even be an issue with students who might go home and not come back.
That would be my other issue.
Okay.
Because that's, that's obviously, uh, that's a real thing, everybody may not see that, but it is a real thing. Sometimes it is hard to get students if they have no transportation. Uh, so, you know, they're relying on bus transportation to get here, and then they stay all day after school, you know, whether they're in, maybe whether they're cheerleaders football. Or if they're in the band, um, on, on a Friday where you have a football game, so that would be another concern that I would have on, on the days that have been chosen. The other thing that, that I would bring up is the, the Girdan enrichment Friday, so that's gonna be a twenty-first century thing, is that correct?
But twenty-first century would be part of it, that who would hire our teachers to actually do the tutoring that would be in that, also Save the Children. Um, Foundation, which is, is doing some of that as well, uh, it's an opportunity for our seniors to get some tutoring hours. So the things, the hours that they're gonna have to get as far as community service, there would be a venue that they could do that as well. So there's, there's ways we could open that up, whether it's a Friday or Monday, that would be irregardless.
So, I, how many, I, 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 I think that's a, I think that's a good idea. But I, I would have to wonder, maybe somebody can fill me in, how many students are utilizing the twenty-first century program currently, after school?
In the morning, um, we have approximately seventy-six that come in, um, for our coffee talk in the morning time.
Excuse me, he said after school.
Well, but, but, but they, they utilize it before school too?
Yes.
I say, I didn't know this, okay, this is news to me, so.
And then after school, uh, we have approximately twenty, twenty-five.
So how do those students get here that, uh, utilize it prior to school?
Um, they, they, they're dropped off at, with the bus, they drive, um.
So they getting, are they getting, I, I did not know that, I thought it was all after school.
We're open for six thirty to seven thirty, uh, Monday through Friday in the mornings.
So there's, there's student, so are you saying there's students that get here really early for school?
Yes.
And so they, and they utilize that?
Yes, they have students that come, um, as early as six forty, six forty-five.
So they're getting tutoring?
Yes, they're able to get tutoring, um, and we do coffee talk with, uh, uh. Social emotional learning skills during that time, we do, um. If they need help with their homework, we do homework help during that time, they come in, some of them just wanna come in and play ping pong. Um, and we have a coffee shop, uh, we have a coffee shop that are, um. Our, uh, kids that are going to close up, they're running the coffee shop right now in the mornings. Um, and so they are learning how to do, um, financially, how to, to, um, do that. So we have all that happening in the morning.
So you said, you said seventy-six students in the morning?
I was approximately seventy-six.
And twenty?
About twenty, twenty-five, anyone in the area.
So, I guess this is my other question, so if you go to a four day week, it's Monday through Thursday, and then you've got these days selected out for Girdan enrichment Fridays. How do you increase participation for those days with twenty-first century, with Save the Children? Because you're calling it the four day week, cause see, at my work, when you say, Robbie, you gotta come to work four days a week. I generally don't volunteer to go up there on the fifth day. I don't, and so my thought is, is, ha- I know they're on the calendar, but are they. Actually utilized and benef- and beneficial for the students if, if you can't get them here?
Well, we've talked about running buses to the ones that we expect to be here, so that it would be those students that are specially identified. That are struggling to build, to do scaffold instruction, so there would be certain students that would be targeted, so those are the ones that we would have that would come in on those days.
You hope they come.
Well.
But see, I'm stuck there, cause I don't believe in waiting to struggle to get the help.
No, it's just that maybe they can do the instruction differently on those days, they're not waiting to get the help, it's not like we're just waiting till that Friday.
I'm, I'm in the mindset, hey man, I'm trying to be a, be great, so I ain't trying to wait till I struggle to get some help, even if I've got a little issue, I, I need some help.
And that can, that can be done all, it's all, it's, it's going on now.
All week long.
It's going on now, but this is.
I'm looking at this, I see, I see some months where there is only one instructional day.
Well, like in August, we don't start school until, and then you have one.
Well, look at November, look at December.
A- and November, because we're in three, we're in school three weeks before you have a week off. That you're out, December, the same way, you're in three weeks, so trying to target it where you know that we'll be able to get to work with kids to get them here.
So, is there some type of incentive that's planned, or, I, I'm just trying to think about the, the, the enrichment days.
I don't, I don't know all the answers for that Robbie, of how, how we would do that to incentivize students to, to be there, I don't know that answer.
I'm just gonna sum my last question, if you want to all my questions. Is it moldable? As we go on forward, we see some issues, is it moldable?
Your school calendar, once it's adopted.
No, 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 what we doing, what we doing mold?
Y- y- you can't next year, or any, I would, I would propose that once the calendar's adopted and the school year starts, I wouldn't go back and redo the calendar.
I, it is moldable, I've got issues here, kid, is it moldable, I can pick up my issue?
Uh, I'm not sure how to answer that question to be, Bernard.
Okay, I'm looking here. I'm going in, I got, I see, I got, my data show me I got an issue here. Is it moldable, I have more instruct- instruct- enrich instructional days, cause I'm looking at one month, every Friday is an instructional day.
Then that, and that month on Friday instructional, because we're approaching testing.
I don't see it.
So.
We, we voted on testing, but what about getting them to test it?
But that's one of those other dates, every other week is pretty much laid out to where we can make sure we do that, there's still instructions going on in, in, during the week.
Can I say something as far as instruction goes, um, instructionally, it's better. Because that Friday is an opportunity for targeted intervention for those students that just can't get it. As a teacher, and I've got twenty-three, twenty-four kids in a class, I'm teaching whole group to my students. Yes, I do some small group, but there are some kids that just won't get it, so that Friday, even that one Friday. You have targeted intervention, and every teacher that's there is a licensed teacher. Who is licensed to teach those subjects, that will be able to help that child, and when you differentiate. Instruction, and you do it one-on-one or in small groups on that Friday, it's gonna benefit that child even more, and that's instructional.
That sounds great on our side, but what about the community side? Cause my kid rides the bus. There is no bus for my kid on that Friday.
No, we said that, we, we're talking about.
Kid got to keep his little sister who ain't in school. So is it another day I can get some instruction?
Outside of the regular school day, the four days a week?
That would be moldable, because it's great on our side, cause we're here anyway. But what about this community that has these kids that we know has issues a- a- and, and they need some help? See, it sounds good on our side, cause it's great, cause it benefits us tremendously, cause we're here anyway. We ain't getting no hidden pay for less days, we ain't getting nothing, but I'm looking at the community that needs our help, because the community gonna change and we change. Now, I ain't got nothing, for me personally, I'll tell you, this works great for me, but I'm not the normal community.
So will there be any twenty-first century lack of floor, yeah, I mean, that's what you're.
Century will continue.
As, as is.
Won't be the same, because the school day would be longer, but twenty-first century will continue to run the way that it's running now.
And then we'll have.
Those extra hours would be absorbed into that enrichment day.
So going back to like the Friday, Monday situation, like what, what was our coaches, was our athletic directors? He wants to be off on Friday.
He said either way, he said he prefers Friday.
So, so one of the, one of the coaches from a school that has football had told me that he, he likes like Thursday night, if they have a late game, you get to sleep in. Bring kids in at ten to noon, and then they kinda have like a rest day, but that was one person.
Cause I, I asked him myself, he, he, he said he plays fine for Friday.
Now, as we were designing this, I'll tell you, football coaches, we did, they didn't weigh in, they, they did not, they what, they're not the driving force for why we pick Fridays.
Okay, I was just wondering if that was like, they had a strong positive or, or against?
Be, well, because I, I wanted Mondays, when I'm looking at, because there's four days that naturally fit as the, we're already off anyway. I know, and that, now, and, and if you look at it from the teachers, I've worked with them for four days, I know what they're struggling with, and if I can get you here tomorrow. I got something I can really target you on, then I know that week, instead of come, wait in the weekend and get you on Monday to, to bill it, so I mean, there's. Pros and cons in both ways of that.
I just wish more than two hundred and thirty-eight people would have responded, cause there's six hundred kids in the school, and only two hundred and thirty-eight people responded. That's my thing, it's a logic.
That's an actually good number to get a response from, when you put it out there like that, we usually don't get that kind of response when we send out, like we send out those.
It was a pay.
Art survey, through text, through email and all that, we really don't get that kind of response, we were kind of overwhelmed at the amount of response that we did get on that.
It wa- it was a, actually they could go on, and it was a survey that they could complete, it wasn't like a text to respond back.
Yeah, I, I was at work, my phone started going off, are y'all going to four day, what are you talking about? Did you get a text? I did, but I didn't, I didn't have time to read it, you know?
Miss, I got a question for you, you, you said that, uh, twenty, twenty-first century will continue as is except for the hours. Do you have an idea of what the hours, how they would change during the Monday through Thursday?
You know, they go, Erica, what time do y'all usually end?
Um, we end at six thirty right now, and it will probably still stay to six thirty, our hours are from three thirty to six thirty right now. So if we go to four ten, it would be four, uh, four fifteen to six thirty, or we could even push it back to seven o'clock. Because we've gone till seven thirty in years past, we just took off an, an hour.
And, and that time is when parents would come and pick them up, yeah, so that's just the availability for them.
We can still cater that to meet the demand.
Yes.
And so how many, how many teachers are right now, um, working in twenty-first? Or how many teachers or parents or, or have you, are working in twenty-first century?
We don't have any parents working, um, all of our, um, tutors are licensed teachers, and right now we have. Six.
And so would that number have to change if you had the enrichment days on Friday, would there need to be more or less? Or would they divide up on which Friday they were gonna be here, or how would that work then?
We would, um, staffing for twenty-first century is, um, eleven, uh, eleven students. We would um, staffing for Twenty First Century is um, eleven, uh, eleven students to every one teacher. Um, but uh, with uh, Sina and I there, um, we take up any extra, any individual one-on-ones um, that are needed. So um, if we need to increase, we do. All of our tutors don't work on the same day um, right now because we don't have a demand for it. But when we do, um, and if we do, we can increase the staff, staffing.
Missy, I got a question for you. It is kind of fundamental. We have, we brought you with all this stuff here on the spot, but in your opinion, do you think this is doable? Successfully doable?
Is it doable? Absolutely. Because, and this is just, again, my opinion. If twenty-twenty taught us nothing else, it's that we can't continue to educate kids the way that we have before and expect the same results. These are not the same kids. They're not built the same way, and they have different expectations for things. I've told everybody, because all of my staff asked me, well, what do you want? It doesn't matter. The contract I'm on, I'm going to be here regardless. It's what we need to do to progress, to get where we need to go. So is it doable? Absolutely. It all boils down to the quality of the instruction that they're giving, no matter how many days a week it is. And that's what it all boils down to.
The last question that I have is since we've had some implement weather days, if you went to a four-day, a four-day week schedule, would you be able to use that fifth day as an implement of weather makeup? You can do that.
Yeah, in fact, yeah, you can actually do that. Uh, in fact, Center Point is doing that this Friday. They call school on Monday and announce that they're going to be doing it Friday to make that day up. You can, and, and we, we have to identify five days as, as weather makeup days, and we identified those all in April. So we had to identify those parts. We can use, we can make them up earlier so we can keep on time. But yes, those Fridays, that's what we would do.
Any more questions?
And I would propose, Robbie, that if something were to happen in the fall, that you try to make that day up as quicker than, rather than bank it for later on in the year. Usually you keep them for, for snow days. But if, if something were to come through and we had torrential rains and we were, had to be out for a day because of flooding, then that Friday or whatever that day might be, you, you take it that as soon as you possibly can to make it back up.
And Dawson would stay, Pre-K would be here five days.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
But I guess would you have the same number of um, would you have the same number of periods per day as you do five-day versus four-day?
Um.
Does it be longer?
Yes, your classes would be longer. Now, whether or not we're on an eight-period day again next year at the high school remains to be seen. We could go back to a seven-period day, but no matter how many periods we have, they're going to be longer, which lends itself more in fashion.
But we've also discussed uh, building in some other time for some interventions too as well, especially in our lower grade levels, so.
And that's, that's something too, you know, last year, if you remember, in the spring, we were leading up to testing, we did our boot camp at the high school to help prepare our kids. Because of having that eight-period day this year and the time that we've got with them, they did no way for us to pull that time out to do that strict instruction time for boot camp. So now we've created the focus weeks to try to broaden it across the campus all throughout the year because that, that did hinder us there. So the more time that we have built into our day, the more of an opportunity we have to create those intervention times.
Any more questions? We cannot have a motion to recommend this academic calendar for twenty-four, twenty-five?
Can I make a motion to? I don't know what that was. I'm gonna, I divide this up to celebrate that, so it's less. A motion to uh, add, to request from the state of Arkansas, a twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five regional early start date.
We got a motion, all in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed.
The easy one.
Okay. And the other part of that would be the calendar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to accept the calendar as written?
Make a motion to accept calendar as written.
The four-day calendar?
Four-day.
Well, we have a motion.
A second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All in dissent, same side.
Aye.
That motion passed.
And the next item on the agenda is uh, that you see is, is, there's two policies for, that are PPC that we're looking at for personnel. This is your first reading, so get back with me if you have a question about if, any of that. So that you should, there's two policies and, and directly applying to a couple of things that we want to make sure about governance and some of the things that have changed. We are going to be transitioning from the old G policies to section three policies. So we're going to try to get that accomplished in the next couple of months. Uh, there is going to be another group of policies that have come out that you're going to get next month, so you'll be, next month you'll be approving this and getting another first reading group of policies. So it is policy month. You can.
But currently under review, that's, that's the new.
That's, well, that policy G, it just means that we're, we're reviewing this, and yes, when you see where I've written that, the G policy is what we had before, and where it says currently under review means that is my indicator marker that, hey, this is what we're looking at as we're trying to build all these things together. So I, so I don't make a mistake and put that in there, uh, post it anywhere that, that this has been approved yet, because it hasn't. So.
But the currently under review is what would be the new policy.
Correct. That's how, you see where I've stricken down.
Asking, so there's so many dates on one page, it's not numbered, it's two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, I'm seeing another page, am I correct?
Get with me, Robbie, and make sure I don't miss it somewhere, if people wouldn't mind. Oh, okay, so what, what that means is, back when this was all done, when, when state legislature wrote these things, they went into event into, so you're talking about like a third page over on the second one. When they write that, there's going to be some, beginning in this school year, fourteen, fifteen, every fourth year this should be happening, beginning in the twenty-three, twenty-four, this is what took place. So that date is correct. Uh, the only place on that policy that you're going to see where I've changed it was the date uh, that would be the July one to June thirtieth. Because the way that the, way that this was written is that the state came out and they want, or trying to line up all of your staff development. And your staff development, when they, when they line up all of their calendars, they wanted to do everything July one. When we accepted that and we put it in policy, our policy was from June first to May thirty-first. So what that means is it invalidated all the training they did in June, and they can't count it as their record. So what, what I propose is we go back and fix that, back to the policy the way it was originally, and you change the date from July one to June thirtieth and put it in June one to, through July, uh, to May thirty-one, so then we can go back and retroactive this policy. And then the three days that the teachers took as staff development does count. And that's all we're doing is shifting it back the way that it was before.
I just saw it.
Yeah, that, and that's what, you'll, and you'll see that in some policies too, but that, good catch, thank you. So that's, that is, no actions needed on that today. Uh, that'll be done next month. Uh, then we have, it's time for our district uh, master plan and resolution. We have with us Leslie Dias, who's going to help us to uh, discuss this and uh, walk through quite a bit of information that she's helped compile, and so thank you for being here and I'm glad you, I'm glad you made it safely.
I'm glad you all were flexible with your schedule on your agenda tonight, and I apologize for being late. Um, every other year I meet with you guys as a board and we go over your facilities master plan. That master plan has to be turned in to the division no later than February the first for their approval. So I will ask you to sign a resolution tonight that approves this master plan. Uh, we've placed projects on the master plan. And one of those projects is a partnership project, so I want to look at that specifically with you guys because as a part of the resolution that I have with me today, we're also approving that project for submission to the state as well. So that just means we're turning in an, an application for that project. Um, just like we did in the previous cycle where we had the GM HVAC approved. That was through funding that we got by going through the steps that we're going through each night. And I'll, I'll go through, has anybody had a chance to look at this yet and, and sort of familiarized themselves with the projects that we have or sort of the layout of what our presentation is? If you, if you need to turn back to this, this package, the easy page is page three. That's where we just summarize everything that you need to know. That's got the projects on it. It's got our current building fund balance, our projected enrollments are listed on that page. So that's, that's just a quick glance at what you want to see. But where I'm about to skip over to is uh, starting on page five. And that's where our projects are. That's the meat and potatoes. That's what really anybody ever cares about there. So the projects that we currently have is committed, and those, that just means those are projects that we have already started or we intend to start you know, in this school year, this school cycle. And that's the GM HVAC, K and B replacements, and then also parking lots. So that's, that should not come as a shock to anybody that we have those programs on the, on the line there. And so as part of that, these are the applications. Uh, the first one is an application. The other one are just project details. So I've got what I'm planning in there for that. Uh, we'll keep going to page eleven in your document. These are the projects that we have planned. So these are projects that have not been started. Um, some of these have been on the master plan by Mr. Vining. We have a safety security upgrades here. We have technology upgrades. Uh, safe room, we have had on here, we've sort of morphed that one a little bit. And then we have entered a new primary school. Um, this school would be for grades K-one is how we are going to have to write the application for that. Um, I'm not sure who all of you were here in twenty-twenty-two. We met and had the same conversation, but at that time it was for a K-four school. So we had that school, we submitted the application for it, we had that approved, and a month before that one was funded, we, we pulled that project back. And so now we're in a position where if we want to bring those K-one students over and we want any help from the state, then we have to submit another application. Um, because of the size of the building that we're sitting in today, we can't ask the state to just build two classrooms for us. Because um, this building is, it's about twenty-six thousand square foot over, can, oversized in your auditorium and it's counting against your suitability. So the way that the rules are written for the state, for the partnership program, we're kind of in a catch-twenty-two to where if we want partnership assistance from the state, then we have to apply for a new school. So this K-one school is a new school. It's a standalone school. It's going to have a, a um, warming kitchen and dining space in it. It's going to have art classrooms. It's going to have special ed classrooms. It's going to have anything that you would find in a self-contained school. So that's, that's the application that I've got put together right now, and that's what I've got ready to submit. Um, I've tried to build in some spaces with this application. The state says that if we're going to build a school for, let me crack this a little. Um, I believe it was. So K-one, if we were going to build per enrollment for that, that number is right around a hundred and one students. So that would be a school for a hundred and one students. What I've tried to build in and what we're talking with um, into our POR is I'm trying to build in a little extra space so that we needed to bring second grade out of the primary school or out of the elementary school here, just to free up some space. We've got some extra space built into this. So for those one hundred students, you would need right around twenty-six thousand square foot. If you built it for a pre-K to second grade or a K to second grade, it would be more like thirty-six thousand square foot. The second piece of that is we cannot build anything, whether you have partnership money or any kind of money, you can't even build one classroom on this campus unless you build a safe room. So that's the other piece of this. So what we're trying to do is do that safe room in the PE portion of this building. So this building would also have PE. So back two years ago when we put this together, we thought, you know, at that time, you guys were looking at, well, if we bring all these kids over, we need more PE space, we need more dining space. So we were going to do not only classroom additions, but also build cafeterias. We were going to build gyms. So this is a all-under-one roof type of facility. So it's going to address all those needs, just in a different way. Do we have any questions with that?
Can I ask one question?
Yes, no.
Uh, you, you may not, we were, we were addressing the auditorium building and what, how it, the square footage kind of messes us up a little bit. But what, Mr. Vining was talking about maybe uh, asking for a waiver. Do you know?
We submitted that waiver, yes. I heard that waiver and we turned that in and we spoke to the state about it and the state denied it. So they said, you, the way that the rules were written, that is not something that they could approve. So for that to be accepted, it would require a law change. And right now, I've not seen any type of, anything getting typed up for that.
Gotcha.
Hey, else have a question on that?
We're going to get ours better. Yeah, we got to find the ground. I don't know if we got
So those projects are there. The, the one thing that I am going to change on this, and it's on page fifteen.
You can.
Um, and your thing is, I have it listed currently as a twenty-five, twenty-six, but um, I've been speaking with Oscar Vaughn and uh, you know, his, his staff, we, we've kind of looked at that and we're moving that to a twenty-six, twenty-seven project.
Okay.
So that would be for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, and I'm making that change in this document before I submit it. Um, if, if we did that, one thing that we talked about is, you know, this would most likely require a millage increase. And so we have to list in our resolution that I turn in for this project that if we were to seek a millage, it would probably anticipate a date would be, we put May of twenty-twenty-seven.
We did not know whether we would need a village increase, but to go forward next year, talk about next year, I thought would be a little bit hasty. So it would be better to wait another year. Let's see what our financial is. Ron is currently working on, on banking money, so we'll know exactly what we're looking at and what we're able to save. And that will also tell us what we're able to then use for monthly payments towards other bonded that we would be able to do. So you'll have a better accurate, accuracy as to decide what we can afford and if we do need to or don't need to.
A lot of them have been upon our numbers too, right? I mean, we keep dropping students, we, we're not going to be able to.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you, good news is, is we have since the beginning of the year, we've probably added about twenty-eight students since August to now. Most of them are in elementary.
We got four new ones this week.
Sorry, Cam.
We have drastically increased since Thanksgiving.
What can you contribute to that, too?
Well, one big thing is actually the way ministries. So the adults that are getting some help from the way ministries and everything that they offer, they're coming in with their students and we're able to involve them within our district. So that's been a big blessing.
So Dr. Vaughn, do you want to take this for me? And you guys could discuss that. That is the resolution that I'll have to ask you to sign. Um, it will need to be notarized.
Okay. And then so, and then, and you just need me to scan this in, or do you need the original copy of this?
Scan it in.
Okay, so.
Yeah, you can keep the original here at the district.
That'll take action from y'all if we want to proceed on with this, and if you're accepting of, of this master plan as we've talked about. Are there any more questions that we, well, we've got the expert here.
We're not committed to nothing on this.
So, so here's, here's the situation. You have to turn in a master plan. You don't have to take any money. You don't have to take any money. But to.
But you had to apply when you want to do something.
Yes, sir, and we only get to apply every other year, that's why every other year I meet with you, if there's anything you want to.
If we don't apply now.
If you wanna get in on this cycle.
Right.
And then I have to turn that application in on March the first, now I brought another resolution in case you guys have to talk about it and you don't wanna. Agree to the partnership portion of this yet and you just want to approve the master plan. Either way we go, we have to approve the master plan tonight or else we found ourselves in facilities distress, so.
Cause so, so I'm, so. I implore you. To pass this resolution, to have this plan in place for that school so we can. Get away from that building that's over there and bring the students all over here under one compound. So I think that is beneficial, right now, they do not have funding help for pre-K. Since it's changed who actually owns pre-K, that may come in the future. There have been discussions about it going back and retroactive. Activating this and allowing you to put on a pre-K if you've got it, or you may be able to amend that decision or then add it on, so. What I propose is, we're talking with architects, is you look at how can we expand this to add the pre-K wing onto the building that we're gonna build. So that's already been discussed, how we might be able to accomplish that.
And another funding source that we are, um, hoping to receive would be through FEMA, so, uh, that's something that. The district is going to try to chase now, but that will be another conversation, that'll be another contract that you'll have to assign with. That agency that prepares that application for you, but that's another application and it's gonna be. A very important one moving forward to, to try to chase down some FEMA funding.
Cause that, that funding will directly impact the safe room, which is very expensive. So that, that's where that would attribute to.
Yes.
Any motion to approve this or?
Can I hear, hear a motion to approve the master plan?
Make a motion to approve the master plan.
You got a motion in a second, all in favor of that motion say aye, all in dissent, same side, that motion passed.
The next thing on the agenda is, uh, your board hours, everyone has completed it.
Uh. It's way over.
Ms. Moore is over.
Overachiever.
Well, it could be that I'm, I'm saying you don't have enough hours, get them and she goes and gets more.
Yeah.
Uh, there are no board to board transfers. And then the last is a, a presentation that I put together. To talk about. I've been here six months and to talk about what, uh, so you guys would know. What I've seen. Uh, with recommendations and with some. Uh. Thank you ma'am, be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am, happy bye. Did you pass those around ma'am? You just thought we were done? If, if you. Don't leave before you sign this, if you, if anyone needs to leave. Yeah. Yeah, no, I got one. Alright, so. What I did is, is, is just wanna go through some of the things that we're talking about and, and what we're building on and what we. Some of the things that when I came in, I really wanted us to focus on that with changing our climate and our culture. And so we did a really good job of doing that, you got some fabulous teachers here. And I've tried to look through the lens of if I was a consultant coming in to ask you anything or to, to look and see, what would I see, what did I observe? And what other professionals could I get to come in and actually say these things? So this is what I wanted to know, I wanted to dig into where we are and what happens, so. This is a measurement from June to December, we're looking at data, so you see all the progress that we've made in some of the things. This is all before me and the things that we were doing, the remodeling projects, all that we've done. Uh, so you got a lot of people that have been involved in all of these things, a lot of progress has been made. And, uh, the, the mileage that we had. Uh, and what y'all, what y'all had prepared and, and passed before, took care of a lot of these things and we're not done with that, so there's more of that, that would come. So we talked about well-rounded students. So here's some things that I wanted you to know about, we recognize, started recognizing kids on campuses in these meetings. Uh, student field trips, there's a number of field trips that happened, there's, our students are able to go to, our wellness center is state of the art. You, I mean, it's amazing that you got this here, a lot of places don't have that, so inside of that, you have twenty, also have twenty first century learning, you have, say, the children that's here. Great programs are helping to help kids. Out in the community with the sustainability of their life. With food projects and things like that to where they actually get to take things home, make sure that they're fed. This, in the last six months, we have received. Two hundred and six thousand dollars in grants, free money. That's, that's Ms. Schaefer. And that's other people saying, hey, here's an opportunity, can we do it? And so we just dump it into Ms. Schaefer and say, go get it. And she's been very good about that, we're still waiting on about thirty six thousand dollars, thirty five, six. That would come with be two hundred and forty two thousand dollars, one grant we did apply for, a thousand dollar grant, we did, we were denied it because the teacher got it last year. So, but we tried anyway. Of our wellness center, we've had at least two hundred and eighty seven students walk through the doors. Two hundred and nine students receiving medical services, ninety eight students on a continuing rotational basis with behavioral health. And also our dental, the dentist that comes in to where they don't ever have to leave, they could stay right on campus, get their treatments and go right back to school. Otherwise they might not get, uh, take, be able to take advantage of some dental care. Our academic standard. Here's the big, the big piece. What does it look like? Our ratings this year were D C D for high school, middle and for elementary, we know we got work to do. So what does it look like? So. What is the district, the campus, what do we do as administrators, what are we working through every week? We developed and put in place a weekly cabinet meeting where we talk about what's our problems? Where are we looking at, how are we going to make sure that we are in classrooms, walking through the halls, talking with teachers? So that's what we do as a district level and also our high school principals, as we're high school and elementary principals as we're looking at this. Staff development, is it targeted? Targeted to the things that we need. So we've had those discussions to make sure that we're building the program that will help our staff get stronger at what they're doing. And then there's planned discussions with staff, meeting with teachers that need help. Principals are targeting those discussions with what we need to do, building the climate cul- culture on campuses. The coaching, the staff for student learning and the, the P L C, what we did with cabinet was really a P L C. It's a professional learning community. There's no harm, no foul, we all build on this. And we've already done two book studies going through, uh, the cabinet. And so we've got another one that we're gonna have staff development on thirty first? January thirty first. And it's called the five dysfunctions of a team. Building us stronger so we're stronger leaders in our district. So that's what we're gonna be doing there. Instructional facilitators. I'm not gonna read you all the list, I didn't include everything I've seen them do. This is just for you, take it home, look at this, these are the things I've seen our instructional facilitators. Doing within our classrooms and working with our teachers, working with our students, developing things for us, so. They work hard. Uh, never seen them slow down. So. Talk about recommendations, we talked about, Robbie asked the question, so are we too light? Well. I've got some proposals. So y'all close your ears. My proposal is this. That you have the high school principal, you have an elementary principal, I'm proposing that we replace the instructional facilitators with assistant principals, I'm gonna tell you why. Your leaders here. Are instructionally designed anyway. But your instructional facilitator. Has no teeth. So if something really needs fixed, they can go in and coach and they can talk, but there's no teeth. To that, oops, what did I do? You need to be able to have that, there's things as an administrator that they can do. Then also in high school, we need a, a high school's social studies teacher in addition to what we have. We're also going to need to add a seventh and eighth grade teaching position and probably two additional paraprofessionals so that we can. Do the things that we want to do to, to scaffold the instruction. And get the pieces there. In elementary school, you're going to probably need another elementary teacher, the numbers are just growing. And then two additional paraprofessionals to help get all these things supported. So. One of the things that I want to be, to stress too, of the high school social studies teacher in the seventh day teaching position, that needs to be a dedicated assistant basketball coach. Coach Wright's a great guy. But he needs that help. We're gonna build the basketball program, then he needs that help to be there. So. These are the staffing things that I think we needed to consider. Um, they don't know what I put up here. These are the things that I'm looked at for that, so let's talk about that. I invited the Arkansas Department of Education to come in. I invited Dawson Co-op to come in and walk our building, look at our teaching, look at what we're doing. The next lines that you're going to see. Are directly from them, they're not from anybody here. They're not from me. But I wanted you to see what they said about what they saw. So when they came early, I wanna say it's in October. What they observed was very little direct instruction, too many worksheets, it was not aligned with high quality instructional materials. Teachers that should have had word walls up, did not have them up, if they were, they never observed them using them. They were not using teaching or using or teaching current standards, some were using outdated standards, even posting outdated standards. So that was a concern. So. A D personnel also felt that they were not warmly received in the classroom. When they would walk in, it wasn't a great to see you, how are we doing, they was like, would you get out? So there's a, there's that problem that, that they perceived. In two to six, second and sixth grade, students were excited about learning, the curriculum was used, but they were still teaching on a lower level. So the reading practice wasn't observed. They saw more sit and get instruction rather than the engagement that they would like to have seen. Then also in other areas, they observed that teachers were working with small groups, but the small groups that they're working with was low instruction. So what they recommend. We need to use decodable texts. We need to have appropriate on-grade level planning and a plan. We need to use current standards, not outdated standards, and some of them have changed as soon as this past summer. And all the teachers have gone through that training and we have to teach on grade level. And then they also talked about, make sure the learning targets are po- posted, that, that, that they need more run, world, uh, reading practice. And they also need more independent reading, that will beef up their skills and they have to use state-approved, high-quality instructional materials. So. Those are the recommendations. The second visit that came back. Indicated for a center, they saw that they were working in sentence of, centers that were evidenced, so they had built some of those pieces. But some of the centers were still below grade level. If we're gonna scaffold and build them up, they have to go up, Robin.
How much time between the first and second visit?
I think the second visit was in November, the end of November.
And first visit was?
In October. So it's about a month. Was it December? Beginning of December. So I, I know the first one was in October, I don't remember the date, I wanna say the twenty third, it's well, it's in my mind, but. So they, so look at the transition, so still on K to first, we're still not teaching on grade level, we're still not teaching sounding words. Still not seeing the word walls being utilized to build that, still seeing outdated, posted. On the wall, standards that are outdated and gone. Teachers were observed teaching cursive in K for, K one, that shouldn't even be taught in K one. So that, that was a lesson that someone liked, that they kept, so they were teaching there, that's not in their curriculum part. So in second through sixth grade, they were reviewing work from previous week and one of the teachers, now, I, they got really specific on, so I'm trying to keep general. So that no one can be identified, how's that? So I want you to see, I just want you to know what they're telling me. So there's no evidence as to why it was reviewed from the previous week, they're not seeing a consistent, consistency of using high-quality instructional materials. C K, C K L A, uh, which is the curriculum piece, um, the teaching material is not in grade level curriculum. And it's still, we're seeing some of the old curriculum, some of them are not using the current curriculum and standards. So those are issues that they wanted to see or that they brought up. What do we do about it? So you have to start with foundational skills. You have to see the evidence of the reading, the writing practices, they wanted, they want us to use more of the H Q I M and C K L A, even in K one. Predominantly in K, uh, in two six. They stressed over and over in my meetings with them, y'all are not teaching on grade level. And they kept hearing. But the kids aren't ready for grade level. And they kept saying, if you don't teach on grade level and then scaffold the support, you'll never get them on grade level. So that's what the consistency that they're talking about. And they said, you have to mandate that they use current. Standards. You're gonna have to do it. So then they have to teach on tier one, tier one is on grade level. Tier two and three are struggling students at different levels to make sure it's happen, use the current standards, teach on grade level. Uh, teach grade level standards, post learning targets. Planning that directly shows that there's high-quality instructional materials that are targeted within the lesson plans. And then set up the accountability system. And if teachers are not doing what they need to be, the question is, are you documenting they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing? Okay. So then it gets into the hard parts. So here's the questions. Have teachers been through new standards, training, yes, they were. Have all teachers, all, are all teachers RISE trained? Most teachers have been RISE trained, I'll tell you, but there are a few, if they change the content area that might not. Uh, they're still going through the process now. But they are either done or they're going through it. When and how are word walls used? All teachers did not have up on their, on their walls, they're required by grade levels and I wanna say it's K two. Alright, okay. Those need to be up there so they can talk about sounds and phonics and phonemics. Uh, things that I didn't even know about, till I had to go through RISE training and science of reading training. So the word walls are there, administrators are monitoring those pieces, they're trying to watch for and see, are they using them? So we're trying to build that process as well. So then what support has been given to teachers that changed grade levels, they recognized that a lot of teachers. We had a big shift. So what support's been there, a lot of support has been given from the administration, from the instructional facilitators. From, uh, Dawson Co-op who is here, we have some there here every Friday, we have some that are here periodically through the month. We have had eight, uh, Arkansas Department of Education here and they've given the support to this, our instructional facilitators have worked, are working with teachers. Uh, the administrators are working with teachers in the classrooms as well and to build their lesson plan, so. A lot of help has been going to try to make sure that everyone's stable. So do teachers plan together? Elementary teachers are expected to plan together. They're expected to get together by the grade level, secondary teachers a little bit harder. Because there's only one man teacher, one social studies teacher, but they do collaborate. Uh, when it comes to individual students. So then instructional facilitators plan with and are available for all teachers. And they make time, I know Erica Hart has been up here early in the morning to meet with a teacher who, who needed help. So I know she's been up here, I've seen her here when I was getting my coffee. So. Here's a, here's what I want you to consider. The goal that should every superintendent should have is the fact that we're getting, improve our instruction, we have to improve our overall state rating. But what we're seeing is from A D E N, from Dawson Co-op continually saying, we're not teaching at grade level. We have to do this. The teachers, some teachers are resistant, some are even to the point where they said they were resentful. Of anybody in their classroom. We have to break down that barrier. One way or another. It's gotta be broken down. So some teachers that did not respect the administrator, uh, requiring changes in teaching practice. If we're not teaching as designed by the state of Arkansas. Even if a teacher were to get mad and leave here. They're gonna go to another school district and that school district is gonna require that they teach as designed by the state of Arkansas. We don't have a choice in that, that's where we, that's where we are right now. But we have to start documenting teachers. If they're not doing what they're expected to be doing, we have to start documenting teachers. Then you, you and I have to do as board is we've got to support our administrators. In moving our instruction. It's not gonna be easy.
Let me ask you a question.
Okay.
What are we gonna do about the ministry that's not documenting teachers?
Well, that's, that's, we've already had that discussion. Because my point was this, if you're not documenting it, that means I've gotta document you. So we have, it, it, it has to be done, to get where we need to go. We have to change what we, what we've been doing. Uh, I don't, this is not, this is not a fun report for me to give y'all. But, but it's the truth. And I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be just brutally honest. For us to step back and let's just say, hey. What are we gonna do to change? So I know last year, about January, uh, we sent some people and they went to Bradley, Arkansas, and look, how'd they do things differently? Um, we have to then say, what can we do to? Um, we have to then say, what can we do to add to that? There are other school districts that are doing some great things. We're going to plan another trip and go and see some other things are going on. But we can bring in every grade program. But if we can't get buy-in, I don't care what you do. We have to get on grade level teaching and then support the other pieces. We will never catch up if we're not doing grade level.
Is there a, um, is there a reasonable given as to why we're not on grade level?
Well, we're not teaching on grade level because our kids are too far behind to get them up to grade level. It's not my fault. It's the previous teacher's fault.
Why much the previous teacher when you're in kindergarten though?
Okay. That's a point. But here's, so here's what I would say. If I have students come in my classroom and they've come from out of state and they come in and they're struggling with where it is, I'm going to take, I need to take that kid. Here's the third grade level that I need to be teaching them. They're working at a second grade level. I still teach at a third grade level. Then I recognize Ken Vaughn needs some extra help. Then I come over here and say, we're going to scaffold this instruction to get you to third grade. I'm not taking everybody down to second grade. I teach to the grade level and then I support as needed to the places that are here. Uh, we have to increase our rigor. We have to build into our instruction, high-quality instructional materials and they're implemented with fidelity. Has to happen. We have to teach bell to bell. Um, we need to collaborate our summer P D so that it's targeting, what does that teacher need to get stronger? Not just a blanket. We're going to do this, everyone come. It may be, Mr. Hertz, you need this. We want you to go to this staff development to prove as a math teacher. So we, we need to target those pieces. And then develop a plan for teachers to visit high-performing schools. And we need to go see those of who have sa- similar situation in demographics like we do, that are, that are being successful. What are you doing? What are you doing that we can come back and we can implement? Or that we can take what we're doing to tweak and we're not seeing something. And you want, you want to build that and grow that. Alright. So I've said it. And that's up to us. Any questions about this?
Yeah, I've got a question for you. What, what y'all see in y'all's future? Their kind of despite what, what we're just having this, this guy. Do they think they're smaller than the people that come in from out there? Or?
One thing. Well, I want to say what, what Dr. Vaughn said, that comes directly from teachers that I've heard. And it's like, you know, what they can't do is because there's too many, they can't even do what I'm teaching, what I'm supposed to teach. They're, they're, they're too quality high. And um, but a lot of times it's that they're not welcomed in because maybe that observer or whoever it might be has been out of the classroom. And so they feel like that propensity disentmated from them. But the lady that we have that's coming in from Desi, she's a RISE lead specialist. And she actually taught for decades in uh public schools before they asked her to come to the state for the RISE special training. So that's one of the things that I know.
I think, well, you know, my campus is different than hers in that I have a lot of younger teachers, newer teachers. And I think some of them are still real uncertain about way to use these things. But that's something that we have noticed. And Katie that came in with A net notice. They have the tools there, but they're still not real sure how to use them effectively. So they're taking baby steps with it. They, they try to stay with what feels comfortable to them. And then they're trying to move into something new and they are completely out of their comfort zone and just feel like sometimes they just want to throw their hands up and go back to where it's safe, go back to their safe space. So it's hard to pull them out of that and make them understand if you use this with fidelity and if you ask for help, and that's another thing, they won't ask for help. They will sit and suffer in silence before they ask for help because it's just too uncomfortable for them. But if you use this with fidelity, if you ask for help, if there's something you don't understand, ask for it. That's what we're trying to get past. It's trying to get past that. I just want to stay in my room and do my thing. And they're afraid to ask for help. So I think that's part of it. And the ones who've been there for a while, it's, you know what? I've always done it this way. This is the way I'm comfortable doing it. I think I'm doing great with it. But again, that goes back to our kids have changed and we have to engage with them. But we are never going to get them where they need to be if we keep teaching them where they're at, because where they're at is not where they need to be.
What percentage, who's talking about scaffolding, teach on grade level, but they're scaffolding? What percentage of our children need the scaffolding? Which is your own grade level?
Um, it depends on the subject area because our kids are struggling. They're not struggling at the same level in all areas. Like especially with me at high school. We all know that math has been a, a big deal for us because of the amount of turnover that we've had through there and our kids haven't had consistent math. So if you look at our math scores, you can see that's where they need a lot of help. And on some of the grades, some of our kids are stronger in E L A and they are knocking it out. And then you have groups on top and on bottom of them that are not fair and wide as well. So it just depends on what the subject is. In some areas, we've got kids who probably sixty percent of them are going to need that additional help. But in other things, you don't have that many. So it just depends on what the subject is.
I mean, just in my mind, it seems like if a teacher's trying to teach on grade level, but eighty percent of their class needs the scaffolding.
Well, and they get that outside of, of the tier one instruction that's going on in class. That's the whole thing, whole reason for the enrichment and the whole reason for getting that extra help is because we need to be doing it on grade level in class and identifying those kids that are having the most trouble with getting to grade level and pulling those out and giving them small group instruction and giving them one-on-one. But until we're teaching on grade level, we can't identify those kids. Because if we're not teaching on grade level, how do we know if they are on grade level? We're going by the tests, but as we all know, you know, test scores can fluctuate given the condition of the day. It all goes back to what we're doing in the classroom, everything.
Yeah, I'm stressed too. This is not every teacher.
No.
But these are the comments that they came back to me with. So it's not everyone. It's just a consistent pattern that they recognize in our buildings. Alright. You feel free to call me. Ask me other questions later. Um, that's all, that's all I have. And then the last is next, next board meeting will be February the twentieth and you just need a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn, Jerry.
Oh, you've got a motion. Say the motion. Motion and say it all in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed and we are adjourned. There won't be safe going home.